Good evening. This is Rahul Reddy here, live from Reddineum and PC from Houston, Texas. Today, we have a chief guest, Jonathan Vasten. He's the litigation director for Reddineum and PC. Emily, what do you have today?
Yeah, so we wanted to have a special session today that talks everything, business, immigration, litigation. So we're talking about H4 EAD delays and how lawsuits can help with that. We've been talking about that quite a bit. So we'll get some questions answered from John about how that process is and how it's working. We're also going to talk about, we've been seeing this phenomenon for a little while with the Trump administration of shortening the duration of extension approvals. We've even seen approvals that are extended for just one day. And so besides just filing another extension, litigation is another option for that. So we wanted to talk about that as well. Denials can also be overturned by going through the litigation process sometimes. And we want to answer some of your common questions. I think one of the most common questions we get from people who are considering filing a lawsuit is, is the government going to retaliate against me later? You know, these are people who are immigrants, they're waiting for their green cards, and they certainly don't want to take any action that's going to negatively impact that. So they always ask that question. So we want to talk about that, answer your questions, anything and everything, business, immigration related today.
First, Emily, you know, before I want to go more deep into Jonathan Vasten, why have you chosen to take the path of the immigration? Reddineum and PC has been existing from 1997. How much litigation experience do we have? And why have you recently chosen the path of litigation?
Yeah, from 1997 through 2018, we've never needed to litigate anything. Generally, our response to a denial was to either refile the petition or file an appeal with the Administrative Procedures Office, Administrative Appeals Office. Time and time again, we were seeing those AAO appeal decisions were just basically rubber-stamping approvals or denials that were coming from the immigration service. So refiling tended to be our number one option. But at some point, when you're refiling so many things, we get to a situation where there's got to be a better option. There's got to be a way to stand up to these unreasonable denials, these unreasonable delays. And that's when we started working with Jonathan early this year to come up with some solutions. Jonathan's got a lot of experience with the Administrative Appeals Office. He's been a litigator for years and years. And so he's really been guiding us on different ways that we can attack the decisions that we're receiving from USCIS, the denials, the shortened approvals, and the delays.
Jonathan, you know, you worked on the other side of the litigation. You defended the immigration service before you went into the private practice. The law has not changed. The regulations have not changed. Why is that we have seen denials going like 10 times more than what they were before? What brought changes in the Washington DC to have these denials?
Obviously, the Trump administration is not a great fan of immigration in general. And as much as they talk about encouraging high-skill immigration, their actions have not matched up with that. What we're seeing happen is, for a long time, everybody has had transparency on what was required in order to get an H1B or some other business petition approved. But those standards have changed. And at the same time as they've changed, the agency has cut off any type of communication with the bar to let them know what's required. So they're doing subtle things behind the scenes to make it harder and questionably legal to make the changes that they want in terms of higher denial rates.
So we were under the belief, Jonathan, that a lot of these things, we have to first go to Administrative Appeals Unit. So let's say, for example, if we get a H1B approval denial, we were under the belief that the H1B first needs to go to the Administrative Appeals Unit, which takes about a sweet time of two years. And by the time, my client will lose the job, there is no job, the H1B validity period in some times will be over, and then we have to go to litigation. Now, you brought in new topic saying that, no, you can litigate without going to the Administrative Appeals Unit. Can you explain the process?
Sure. So the going to the Administrative Appeals Office falls under this legal concept of exhausting your administrative remedies, which the Supreme Court has said that you have to use an internal agency appeal if it's required by regulation or statute. And if there is some type of stay or preservation of your current status quo while that appeal is pending. But under the immigration laws, there is no mandatory appeal in the regulation or statute for the AAO. And there's also no provision for them to stay the negative impact of a denial. So these cases are the type that can go straight into court without having to go through the AAO.
So in the H4 EAD, I mean, that you brought the new concept that previously, we were under the belief that it is going to take approximately four months, six months, or eight months, they put on their website. We are supposed to go to the four months or six months wait, and then raise a service request, which takes 60 days, and they're not going to honor that. And then raise a service request second time, and then we can go to the litigation. Is that true? Or is that a different policy that when you go to the federal court?
No, the agency doesn't have the ability to arbitrarily pick how long they think it should take. The statute says that they should be doing these non-immigrant type of benefits within 30 days.
What? Non-immigration benefits, you mean to say H4 approval in 30 days?
Yes.
H1 approval in 30 days?
Exactly.
L1 approval in 30 days?
Yes.
Well, Jonathan, you worked on the other side. That doesn't work that way.
No, it doesn't. So it doesn't necessarily work that way. But what we've been able to show over time is that something like an H4 EAD or an H4 takes very, very little thought process for an agency adjudicator to go through. There's no excuse for why it isn't being processed in the same pace as the underlying H1. So the agency doesn't really have a good excuse. And the law requires, under the Administrative Procedure Act, the law requires that they take into account the necessity and convenience of the petitioning party or the applicant when determining how long to take. One of the factors they look at is if Congress has dictated how long a process should take. So in this case, Congress has said 30 days. And then when you're dealing with an H4 and an EAD issue, you're dealing with people's ability to have health insurance, pay their mortgage, pay for their kids, college, whatever it is. And so that is having a substantial impact on humans, human beings' quality of life and ability to preserve their property interests and whatnot in a mortgage or a car. So when you come into court and you're arguing that the agency has unlawfully delayed, you get to bring in all these very sympathetic facts and say, look at the impact the agency is having. Not only that, look at how long it used to take them to do this, and look at how long it took them today. I was just going over earlier today with Steve Brown, the processing times year over year. So back in 2014, it took 2.4 months on average to do an H4 EAD. Now, they're taking closer to six or seven months. But they're only adjudicating the EAD after they adjudicate the H4, which itself is taking an additional four to five months. So what used to be a process that would take a couple of days is now taking nine months.
So Jonathan, you know, after we partnered with you, we started litigating on the H4 plus EAD. We got good results. And obviously, there are some people who are not satisfied with the results because they didn't got the approval in 30 days. In the first litigation, we got everything approved in 36 days. So everybody assumed that it's going to be approved in 36 days. And, you know, you already told us that, once you file the litigation, it takes 60 days for the USCIS to respond. And by that time, we practically got every case getting approved. Now, we are turning more tables into not just H4 EADS, but on the short-term extension approvals. Emily, if you have anything on short-term, you know, H1B approvals that they're getting instead of filing?
Right. I mean, a lot of people are taking our advice and filing their extensions early. As you know, you can file an extension up to six months in advance. And so when they do that, and it's not just filing an extension early, but just in general, when you're filing an H1B renewal, you're always asking for three years unless you are hitting your six-year limit or for some other reason. So all of a sudden, we started seeing USCIS being very arbitrary in the end date that they're giving on the approval. And when they do that, when they give you an approval for less than the time you've requested, they're essentially denying part of your request. Yet, they're not giving any explanation of why they've denied the last half of your request or even the full two years and 364 days that you've asked for, because they're approving just for one day and not giving any explanation for it. There's no way to come back to them and ask why. They're not doing this in response to a request for evidence. And so we've decided that rather than wasting our money on refiling to get the proper extension period that we've requested, filing a lawsuit might be the way to do it. So John, have you had some, dealing with these short-term approvals?
Yeah, quite a few cases. And every case is different, and you can't guarantee results in a particular case. But what we see happening in the vast majority of cases is when you've challenged the agency in court on this, they have reopened the petition, which allows you to continue working if it's expired. And then they'll either approve for the full three years, or they'll issue you a new RFE, and then you have an opportunity to respond to that. And then they've approved for the entire three years. So the agency, getting back to, I think, your earlier point about people being afraid to sue the agency, it's kind of an inverse reality, which is, instead of retaliating against you, people that sue the agency tend to get treated better. Because like with any bully, when you punch them in the nose, they tend to, you punch them in the nose, they tend to leave you alone. It's the same thing. Litigation takes a lot of time and effort out of the agency, and they want to avoid that as much as possible. So, you know, that's why, instead of issuing another month-long denial, they tend to give you the initial three years that you had requested to avoid future litigation.
And the cases that we worked on, I mean, the one-day approval that we worked on, a couple of other things we worked on, we got good results from partnering with you, John. On the petition denials, we are getting the specialty occupation petitions denied. And they have introduced a new memo that came in January, February of 2018. Based on that, we are seeing a significant amount of denial. What's the legal basis? And when we get a denial based on that memo, how do you challenge that in the courts? And what is the timeframe that it takes for you for us to get those things reversed, though?
So in terms of timeframe, from the time you file a complaint in federal court, the agency has 60 days to decide whether or not they're going to defend, or whether or not they're going to settle and give you what you've asked for in court. So in a large number of these cases, the agency will reopen before that 60-day mark to try and issue a new decision or a new RFE that usually ends up as an approval. And that obviously has a beneficial impact. It takes a little while. By the time they issue a new RFE and a new decision, it might take a few extra months. But you still have the ability to continue working during that time.
Yeah, I think that's a really important point, because, you know, we're so used to file an appeal, file an MTR, file a motion to reconsider or reopen. None of those give you status while they're pending.
Yeah.
The AAO, when you file an appeal of an H1B denial, it does not put you back in status just because you filed an appeal. Only if the appeal is ultimately successful does it put you back in status for the whole time. So I think that's one of the huge benefits of litigating.
Well, especially with the short-term approval denial cases, which is, if you can file suit between 60 and 90 days before the expiration of the underlying visa, that gives us enough time to wait out that 60-day clock that the agency has to answer in federal court. And almost always, they will reopen those short-term denial cases for two reasons. One is, like you mentioned earlier, they didn't comply with the law that requires them to explain the basis of their denial. So that's a clear win for us. The other reason is, they don't want the courts to make a decision or an adjudication on whether or not they actually have the authority to do that. So for those two reasons, they're motivated to get out of litigation and appease you and let you go on your way.
So what can you do in the situation where you've gotten an extension denied and you're wanting to litigate, but your status has already expired at that point? Is there something you can do with litigation for that?
There are, you can file a preliminary injunction. It's a very high standard to meet a preliminary injunction. It's best if you do these things earlier rather than later while you're in status. That preserves the status quo much easier.
Now, a lot of people are under the presumption that, once we file, once we sue USCIS, which you have been doing so every day, and average, you're filing for petitions every day, two or three cases per person, I mean, not just a case per person. Have you seen anywhere where the USCIS comes and retaliates against a particular person?
No, not really. And actually, anecdotally, the evidence suggests the opposite, which is, those clients that have sued the most, one in particular I'm thinking of, have had stellar approval rates. One company had 100% approval rate last year after filing lawsuit in May. And between May to May, their approval rates have been at 100%. So the agency is highly motivated to avoid litigation, and they do that by treating people who sue them much better than people who don't sue them. So when I was in the agency, I'll just tell you a funny story.
Yeah, you worked on the other side.
Yeah. So I would review litigation cases that came in for USCIS at the Administrative Appeals Office. And an appeal came in, and there was a sticky on it that said, potential litigation case, which meant, be careful, be careful, don't deny this. And I read through the case, and I asked him, well, why is this a potential litigation case? And they said, oh, that law firm sued us before. So we need to be careful. They might sue us again. And it was like three years before, and they were still sensitive about having been sued, and they wanted to make sure that they didn't have another litigation case on their hands. So they're very gun-shy about litigation.
Jonathan, I have this question on, when a company sues the immigration, let's say, for example, on one particular denial of the H1B, is there a potential discovery, that means that the USCIS can come and ask, open up all your H1Bs, all your H4, everything that ever been there, and then try to dig into all the things? Or are they limited only with regards to that particular case only?
So litigation under the Administrative Procedure Act is quite a bit different than the normal litigation people have probably experienced if they're in business. With normal litigation, you do have exactly what you've described, which is this intensive document discovery, looking into every conceivable aspect of your operations. In an APA case...
Administrative practices, which is under which you litigate most of the time.
Exactly. The evidence is limited by law to the documents that you provided to the agency and the documents the agencies gave you. So they can't add anything new to the record. It's locked in stone, and there's no supplementing the evidence. The evidence is what you provided in the course of the petition.
Now, with these H4 delay cases that we're filing, do these individual plaintiffs ever have to go to trial?
No, they don't. This stuff is almost always done without even a hearing. If there is a hearing, it's the attorneys only that show up. And they would argue the legal issues, because these are purely, in theory, purely legal questions that really don't need any additional fact witnesses to show up in court form.
Emily, what are the four things where we have to prove the specialty occupation? Now, of course, there's a difference of opinion when I see in the RFA, what Jonathan tells. One is, does occupation must require a specialty degree? The position must require a specialty degree?
The employer normally requires a degree for that position, and there's something complex or unique or special about the position that requires that.
Specialty degree. Now, when we see the RFEs, Jonathan, we see that even though the regulations are that you must meet one of the four requirements, when we see the RFE, the RFE says that you have to require all four of them to meet the specialty occupation. Have you litigated anything on that? And how does the court react on that?
So that and the other very closely related issue is, is that the regulations say it normally requires, it qualifies as a specialty occupation if it normally, 51% of the time qualifies or requires a degree. The agency has taken the word "normally" and interpreted it to mean "always," which is an odd outcome. So yeah, on both of those issues, we've taken them on. Now, the agency is always going to lose if they demand that you prove all four requirements. That's going to be a nonstarter. And the US Attorney's Office, when they get these cases, they will scrub through, and the Office of Chief Counsel for USCIS will scrub through them. And they'll spot those cases that they know that they're going to lose. And those ones get reopened, RFE'd, and then typically approved. In terms of the normal, always ones, we've got several cases in litigation right now targeting that exact issue, whether or not the agency is overstepping their bounds by requiring proof that it always requires a degree versus normally requires a degree.
Jonathan, with regards to the denials before this administration come in, I mean, we used to see a denial monthly once or so. We used to see a denial. Right now, it looks like, you know, the amount of filings that we do.
Yeah.
Every day, we see a denial. And if you look into the statistics, CAP-Gemini is getting their, and this is a statistic that I see on the USCIS website, is that 40% of their H1B getting denied. And the initial H1B application for the lottery, I mean, they got 70% of their H1Bs getting denied. And Emily, any solution you have for it? I mean, it's not that company. We are also seeing a good number of denials. They are asking us to provide the end client letter, of course. That's already been there. We've been used to it from 2010. They are also asking us now to provide the contract, the MSA between the vendor and the end client. And that's, and normally, the employer don't have the control over whether or not he can provide it. How do we get away from that? And what's a solution when we get a denial, when we don't have any of these listed documents, though?
So the agency is bound by their own procedural rules, as well as their own regulations in the statute. And if you look at their own procedural rules in the Adjudicator Field Manual, it dictates what type of evidence that they are authorized to request from you. And for the specialty occupation, the language that the agency has limited itself to is attestations and descriptions of the position and the degree requirement. So when they come back around and are requiring all this additional evidence that is way beyond that, that is corroborative evidence and improved evidence, it is overstepping what they've said that they are going to require of petitioners. So that's one legal argument we can use to push back on that. The other thing is, there's just the underlying legal question of whether or not that's something they're actually authorized or required to consider. So under the Immigration and Nationality Act, an H1B employer can put an employee in a non-productive status if there's no work to perform, as long as they pay the wage. And they can sit there for the entire three years of an H1B and never work a single day, as long as they're paid. And so there's no requirement for them to engage in any work at all. And what the agency is doing is they're ignoring that part of the statute, and they're making you through those client letters and everything to prove, and the contracts to prove, three years of continuous guaranteed work in the specialty occupation, which they have significant problems with that when they try to argue that in court.
I mean, I don't think anyone in the world can say what they're going to be doing three years from now. No business can guarantee to the immigration service that they have three years' worth of work. Needs change, businesses change. It's practically impossible what they're asking for.
Yeah, you're not the only one to notice that. So we had a hearing in federal court a couple of months ago, and the judge brought up that same question when she was questioning the government attorney. And she's like, this is an impossible standard that you're arguing the employers have to meet. This can't be done. And luckily, she was somebody who had practiced in employment law in her private practice back in the day. So she was sympathetic and understood what actually happens with, you know, employers. But it's an impossible standard. And that's why the practical argument is so strong. They have a very hard time defending themselves.
Now, you know, obviously, things have become very easy now for Jonathan, because this looks like the federal courts are a little bit more favorable to the people who are challenging the government than compared to before. Have you seen anything like that?
So what we have seen is, there has been a substantial uptick in the amount of litigation that has begun on H1Bs and other petitions. And along with that litigation is an increased workload on the agency. And they tend to try to find a way to approve these things before it goes to the judge. So they're kind of in a mad dash to approve before a judge can tell them whether or not they've done something wrong. So in that way, I think, you know, denials are more easily overturned through federal court than, say, going to the AAO, because you have a very high probability that they'll open RFE and approve just to avoid litigation.
Emily, now, we know that if we go to the court, we're going to get a positive result mostly. I mean, not, you know, we can't guarantee it. Past results are not guaranteed for the future. What have you done in your office? Because going to the federal court is expensive. What have you done in your office to cut down the cost to your customers?
Yeah, I think one of the great things with this litigation is, so many people are facing the exact same issue, that it allows us to group multiple plaintiffs together to file one lawsuit on behalf of multiple plaintiffs. Now, that could be multiple H4 applicants with their EADS pending, that could be multiple employers, or that could be one employer with multiple employees who are facing the same issue. So by grouping people together as plaintiffs, it allows us to really reduce the cost to our clients of litigating. Because usually, when people think of federal court litigation, they're thinking tens of thousands of dollars, and that, you know, a two-year-long process of this lawsuit. And that's just really not the case, because we're able to group multiple people together that are facing the same issue. And because, you know, the government has to at least respond somehow within those 60 days, a lot of times, we're able to get results during that 60-day period.
Yeah. So as an example, if you have a short-term approval of an H1B that you want to litigate, if there's multiple people at the same time with the exact same issue, which is a shortened approval without an explanation, they can all join in as co-plaintiffs and sue the agency demanding that they comply with the law. And they will all get the same benefit and have a cost savings.
Jonathan, I've seen some of the denials. They're the boilerplate denials, copy and paste it. It's the same denial. They just copied and pasted, just, you know, they just mail merge the things there.
Sometimes.
Yeah, sometimes they don't. They forget to fix, do the cut and paste properly.
Sometimes they don't mail merge properly. Is that legal? I mean, you work from the other side of it. I mean, come on, you're not even looked into my petition, you're just denying it.
So the law requires that they give you a reasoned decision, or the decision should be the product of reasoned decision-making, which requires that they actually look at the evidence, and they look at the law, and they explain why, under the law, this evidence does not qualify. And when they fail to do that, then the court can overturn their decision if there wasn't reasoned decision-making. And when you see boilerplate like that, you do have the argument to say, look, nothing in this three-paragraph rejection of the expert letter speaks directly to that expert letter. It's all this very general hyperbole-type information that is nonspecific. And so you can argue that, look, you're supposed to actually at least pull some facts from that letter to discuss and explain why that letter is not valid. But in a case I filed not too long ago, it was for a computer system analyst, and I had a denial from the California Service Center on a computer system analyst. And they were eight months apart, but identical decisions, like you say, except for the mail merge. And so we were able to attach that, redacted copy of that decision, and show, look, this isn't reasoned decision-making. This is cut and pasted at a very bad level. And so...
What happened in that case?
So the government had a hard time in their responsive brief. I just filed my reply brief, so we're awaiting decisions.
The questions that are coming up, we'll take questions related to the litigation and probably some other questions. My H4 is already approved. I'm just filing for the EAD. I'm eligible for litigation. It's been 60 days that the EAD is pending. The answer to your question is, yes, you definitely are eligible for the litigation. It may take approximately six months to eight months nowadays to get the EAD approval, which used to take only two and a half months, as you said. That was a long time ago, Jonathan, but it's taking six months to eight months. That was a long time ago, Jonathan, but it's taking six months to eight months right now to get the, the EAD. You, you can drop us an email or contact any other litigation lawyer who is willing to take up your case. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mani from Facebook has a question about the H4 EAD litigation. So in his case, he's on H1 and his wife is on H4. The H1 and H4 extensions are already approved to September 2021. They filed the EAD renewal by itself, and it's been pending since March.
Yeah.
Still pending since March. Put in a service request at the beginning of the month. You know, pretty soon, the EAD is expiring, and they want to know what options do they have? Is litigation an option when it's not a concurrent filing with the I-539?
Yeah, it, it still falls under the category of non-immigrant benefits, which they're supposed to take thirty days to process. And it still has all those same sympathetic facts that we were talking about earlier, where it's impacting people's ability to live and carry on normal life if they lose their, their work authorization. And so there's really no good argument on the government's side on these cases, which is why most of the time, they are in a rush to hurry up and make a decision and get these cases out of court.
Another case for you is, he filed an extension, his H1B is expiring in 2021. He filed an amendment, but amendment got shortened up right now. It's only until September 30th. This question comes from YouTube from Santosh. What's the solution, Emily? What do you do? Is it litigation or, I mean, is there's litigation, non-litigation lawyer? What do you do in that situation?
Oh, gosh, yeah, I don't know. I'm sorry, I was trying to read some Facebook comments, so I totally missed the question.
So the I-94 is expiring in 2021. He filed an amendment plus extension. Now, his I-94 got, amendment, amendment got shortened down to September 30th of 2019.
Yeah, that's a tough one. I think that the benefit of re-filing is that you can file another amendment with the lowest filing fees there are, of just the $460, versus litigation is probably going to be more, more expensive. At the same time, the benefit of the litigation is that you are basically, again, fighting these shortened denials, which is very likely going to lead to a reopening and an approval for the full amount of time. And when you're re-filing that amendment, you know, you are opening yourself up to questioning on everything all over again. No matter how long you've been with the company, no matter how many extensions you've gotten, every time you file with USCIS, you're opening yourself up to questions on, are you qualified for the job? They're looking into your education evaluation all over again, in addition to specialty occupation, even if they have approved the same job ten times before. They're looking into employer-employee relationship, all those things again. So you might end up with an RFE again and all that versus litigation, where you are simply reopening the case that was wrongfully shortened, and you're less likely to have them look at everything all over again. So I'd probably lean towards litigation, but the expense might be, make it not worth it. I don't know your thoughts.
Yeah, and where they're coming up on it within sixty days, that is obviously a big hurdle because if you have more than sixty days left on your, your visa, that gives you enough time to file the case in federal court and have the government have their time to answer. And within that sixty days, they will most likely reopen. But if you file a lawsuit when you're inside of that sixty-day window, they may reopen in time to benefit you, or they may not. So the best time to file is between ninety and sixty days before the end of the, the visa.
Vinod has this good question. Do you have any continuation?
No, go ahead.
Vinod has this question. Why are you not creating a, a, a class action suit on H4, in a H4 EAD? Why are you filing individual petitions? Vinod, you do have a very good question. In fact, Jonathan came in from Washington DC today. One of the, part of the discussion we discussed half an hour to one hour ago was, why are we not going for a class action suit? What are the advantages of the class action suit? What the disentament is, the class action suit? One of the things that popped up, Vinod, is that, that class action suit requires a lot of energy from our office and also from Jonathan, who's going to fund for the class action suit. But we discussed, we discussed, I discussed, I, you know, our team discussed with Jonathan, we are working with Jonathan on looking for class action, not just for H4 EAD, but we also discussed on the H1B denials, H1B shortened approvals, requests of evidence that are asking for unnecessary documents, especially the documents that the employer does not have any control. We have discussed all those things. In fact, tomorrow, I'm going to have, Jonathan is going to have a conference call with about eighty people. These are entrepreneurs that may be willing to fund the money. And he has an appointment at three o'clock on a conference call with them to see if they are going to fund, fund the class action suit. We are going to also discuss with some of the entrepreneurs tomorrow in the morning to see if they are willing to fund. So we are working on the class action suit. I understand the pain, Vinod, what you're going. It's all these individual cases that we are getting, are getting the approvals, but that's not the end result. We should end the misery forever. And the only solution, as Vinod just suggested, is a class action suit.
Yeah, for, for class actions, you've got to have a very narrowly targeted legal issue that applies to every member of the class the same. So for, say, challenging the employer-employee relationship denials, that's a very discreet, small, narrow, limited legal issue that lends itself to a, a class. The trouble with delay is because the way the, the APA or the Administrative Procedure Act is written, each individual petition has its own unique factors, the needs and convenience of the, the applicants. So it doesn't lend itself to a class as well as some other legal issues might.
One other question that popped up is potential H1B delays. You know, we, we at least have premium processing this year, but a lot of people last year dealt with the problem of they filed their H1B in the CAP, and there's no premium processing, it's taking forever. You're getting past October first, you still don't have an approval. Is, or you have a request for evidence that you've responded to months ago, and you're still waiting on an approval. Can litigation be used for that type of delay as well?
Yeah, definitely. So hypothetically, let's say we lose premium processing again next year. So as they're sending in their employer letters with their petition on their CAP petition, you know, they should say, explain why they need a decision by a certain particular date. Let's say, let's use like July first as a...
If you're filing on April first.
Yeah, if you're filing on April first, let's say July first. If they don't give you a decision by July first, that gives you enough time to file a lawsuit, wait the sixty days, and get an answer before October first. So that's what they should be, if we lose premium processing again, three months out is when they should be filing a lawsuit on unlawful delay.
The question that came from, from Ashok from YouTube is that, can H4 and H4 EAD file together? Can you expect them to be approved at the same time? Ashok, yes, they are getting approval at the same time. And if your wife is on OPT, as you mentioned, a STEM extension, you can apply for H4 and EAD. You can continue working until the STEM extension is over. But once the STEM extension is over, if the H4 plus EAD is not approved, you can, you have to stop working. So you may, once you file for H4 EAD, it may be time for you to join the litigation with the group so that you can get the H4 plus EAD approval. BD1981 from YouTube has this question. Emily, you are the finance controlling person. What's the cost for the litigation for, when you tell, for H4 EAD, H1s and all different things? How much does it cost, though, normally?
Yeah, I would say, you know, it's, it's a little more than premium processing as far as the cost of these delay cases when you factor in...
Just speaking of H4 EAD.
Right. So, you know, you've already paid the premium processing fee, you've already paid the H4 filing fee. So it is in that same range of fees and includes the court costs as well in that. So it, you know, it, it is an additional cost, but you have to think about, how many months of salary am I potentially losing by not getting my EAD in time versus spending this one-time additional fee in order to get it in time so that you can continue working?
Jonathan, one other thing that, that is, the questions that are coming is that the F1 visa, especially if the person is on B2 visa, if the person is on, for example, H4 visa and they're aging out. I mean, if the kid is going to become twenty-one years, they can't stay on the H4 visa. They have to move to F1 visa. And this is what happening that I want you to be aware of, that it's taking twenty months to get the F1 visa approved. And the problem with this is that, unlike the other visas like H4 visa, they have to maintain the legal status until the F1 is approved. The problem with this, a lot of these kids are becoming twenty-one, and they can't maintain the H4 visas automatically, they are out. We are filing after their H4 is out and they become twenty-one, we are filing a B2, which we can only file for, entering B2 for only six months. Then we are filing another B2, which is going to be six months, until the F1 is approved. It has become a big pain. Do you have any solution in the litigation for it?
Yeah, again, an F1 falls under the general thirty-day expectation that they're going to process these things. So if they're taking that long, definitely that's in the target where you can, you can start challenging unlawful delay. Because it, that's just absurd, especially given, again, the necessities and convenience of the applicant. They're having this age-out problem. And if you're young and wanting to go to school, you know, you can't sit on, you know, at home waiting for two years for the agency to make a decision on if you have a, a visa to go to school. So it doesn't make any sense for the agency to take that long.
Especially any B visa, even if they're converting, aging out, H4, H1 to F1, they're all taking eighteen to twenty-four months right now, not is. You, last time when you filed, how many extensions you filed?
Yeah, I filed a change of sta, so I filed an I-539 to get the change of status from H4 to F1. About five months later, I filed a change of status from H4 to B2 because they were aging out. And then I filed a B2 extension. And then finally, the, the first I-539 got approved, and then all the other ones after that got approved. So it took three filings to get person, a person one status, just because of government delay.
Yeah.
And with, with the fingerprinting now, you have to do all fingerprinting.
Every single time.
Fingerprinting. So we would advise that if you have any F1 cases, you may want to consult Jonathan Wasson. You can go to RN Law Group and make a consultation with him or with any of our team, RN Law Group. And then it might be worth for you to file a litigation, rather than going through the process what Emily is pointing out.
Yeah.
I would better go with Jonathan's litigation because there are a lot of people that are falling into that criteria.
It would probably be faster and cheaper in that scenario to litigate versus the time expense and filing fees of all of that.
One question that came up on Facebook from Amrita deals with traveling while the H4 or the EAD are pending, and does that cause any issues for litigation? And I think that issue, question comes up quite a bit when we're working with plaintiffs to get them included. Is travel a problem?
You know, it doesn't have any impact on what's happening in court. All of that is set, the only thing the court cares about is what documents you gave the, the agency and the agency's final outcome or decision. So what happens after the denial, the court doesn't really care about.
Okay. And in these, in a situation where you have an H4 EAD pending and you want to travel in between, it really depends on what's going on with your I-539 as well. Did you request a change of status? Then travel's a problem. Did you request an extension of stay? And now you're able to go out and just get the visa stamp instead and come back in? That can work, but it does create, it gives you a wrong I-94 number eventually on your I-539 approval. So you may have to travel again to clear that up. If you don't, it can cause trouble with driver's license renewals because they all use the SAVE system. So it, in short answer, it's not a problem generally to travel while it's pending. It's not a problem for the litigation, but it can create other problems later when you get your approval.
Yeah, I just want to make the point very clear. It's only extension of status where your travel may or may not become a problem. However, if you have applied for a change of status from either F1 to H4 or other visas, you will have a problem. When you leave the country, it's considered that you have abandoned. What Emily was telling us, only it's an extension. That's what she was pointing out. I have this matter of Simeo Solutions. This is a burning topic. This has increased the load of the USCIS by approximately around sixty percent in the H1B. Previously, when we used to file the H1Bs, it was valid for three years. If they have changed to a different location, we used to get an LCA, I meant, file an LCA. Now then, the administrative appeals unit comes in and gives a decision saying that every time a person changes the location, you have to file the entire whole nine yards, pay the, pay the filing fees and most of the time premium processing. And some of the guys got their H1B shortened up when we filed it. How legal is it? I mean, people think that this decision came from the court when it came from administrative appeals unit. Can you explain the decision? What is an administrative appeals unit? How does it stand in the court, though?
So some federal government agencies have the ability to make rules through regulation, which, you know, they publish it in the Code of Federal Regulations, and they have the ability to make binding rules through adjudication. The rules, it has, first of all, it has to say in your statute that you have authority to hold hearings on the record and do adjudicative rulemaking. And then it has to be an adversarial system where there's an impartial decision maker, there's a government attorney, and then there's the private litigants attorney that are hashing these issues out. And there's a deliberative process at the end of it that's the result of the adversarial system. USCIS not only lacks authority in the statute to hold hearings on the record, so they shouldn't have any type of binding adjudicative rulemaking like matter of Simeo. And their process is not adversarial with an impartial decision maker. So the legality of Simeo or any binding AAO precedent decision is highly suspect. And Simeo is one of those things where I, I think the agency has a very clear self-interest in increasing the amount of money they take in from people. And I think it's something that would be vulnerable in a lawsuit.
Have you tried to litigate on the amendment process matter of Simeo Solutions?
So I've had cases where we've touched on it, but again, the government has the luxury of deciding which cases they want to fight and which ones they want to get rid of by approving. So as you get a little too close to a sensitive area, it's easier for them to approve your petition and get out of litigation, then fight that out and possibly lose.
So the only way is that, like the way Vinod and YouTube was pointing out, to have a class action suit is the only way where you can get the justice. Otherwise, they'll keep on approving your applications, but it doesn't solve the problem.
Yeah, if you had a targeted class of cases on transfer petitions, I think you could really impact it.
Ganesh from Facebook has a really good question. He wants to know, what is the specific reason of USCIS behind not giving a three-year extension, especially when someone has an approved I-140? I mean, this is a great question because they don't even have to give you a reason. They're supposed to.
Yeah.
By statute, by regulation.
They're supposed to by statute.
Yeah, because it's a partial denial.
Went to you explaining in the YouTube before, it's because the MSA, SOW and all those things.
Yeah, that's what we eventually figured out is what's causing it. But when they give you that shortened approval, they don't give you any explanation of why they did it. The only reason we know...
We know.
Is because back in the day, when we had the opportunity, we could email the premium processing unit and ask for a supervisor to review the shortened approval and ask them to explain, why is it short? Here's the documentation that supports a three-year extension. And they would come back and say, well, your SOW ends on X date, that's why we gave you that date.
Sünden of work.
So that would be, that's how we found out, is just getting an email response back from the premium processing unit. But there's never been anything, especially in regular processing, there's never a reason given. They just give you the approval and expect you to be happy with it.
So it, it's funny you bring that up because the agency, by statute, has given authority to create regulations determining the time and circumstances that a visa will be issued for an H1B. And so they created a regulation discussing the time of your eligible to get an H1B. And it has all these, like you're talking about, recapture provisions. So they can approve it up to three years, but not everybody has three years of eligibility left on their six-year cap. So that up to language is, when you read the regulation, is clearly referring to the recapture situation.
So if the person crosses six years and they don't have I-140?
So nothing in the regulation or statute anticipates that they're going to be requiring guaranteed work assignments for the entire three years. What they've done is they've taken that phrase, up to three years in the regulation, and said, oh, no, we can approve it for anything less than three years at our whim, and we're going to say you have to have this guaranteed work assignment and you don't, so we're not going to approve it. So when we have sued on that in the past, those cases tend to go away rather quickly. So that's why...
But still, you're just a Band-Aid for all these things. You're just getting your approvals, but not the solution for the whole people.
Yeah, it's, you, you've got to wait for the government to defend if, if you're not doing a larger class action.
All right. I don't know if you've got more litigation-related questions?
We'll go to the common questions that are there, that comes, uh, we are good to ask some of the common questions until we get the litigation questions.
Yeah, I have a question on Facebook about the visa bulletin. So, uh, the September visa bulletin, it is out. Everything, of course, is retrogressed even worse than it was before. And, uh, on that topic, we've learned that EB3 uh, for the entire world has already been used up for the remainder of this fiscal year. So even though there is a final action date in the September visa bulletin for EB3, they ran out of green cards way earlier than they should have. Um, so they're not going to be able to approve any more EB3 green cards until October first at the earliest, unless they've already been assigned a visa number. Uh, so that's one thing that's coming up in the visa bulletin is EB3 is completely gone uh, for the rest of the year, so that won't be available till October first. The other big question is, what's going on with EB1? What can we expect in the future? Um, it's really important to understand that this is the new normal for EB1, even worldwide. There will continue to be retrogression for EB1. Um, what we're hoping, best-case scenario, EB1 worldwide on October first comes back to where it was back in July. But that is still a backlog. Um, EB1 India is not going to come back to where it was in July. It's even further retrogressed. Um, so that is something to be really aware of. And the fact that EB1 worldwide is being used up and unavailable really tells us that, again, there's just not enough green cards out there. You know, we, we've always talked about the, the seven percent cap causing these backlogs specifically for India and also for China. But when you look at EB1, this is, you know, there should be, uh, the smallest number of people eligible for EB1. This is like cream of the crop type of people. And even that is getting used up across the world. So it's clearly not just the seven percent issue.
Even if a Nobel Prize award winner were to apply for the green card under this administration, he's not going to get the green card immediately?
Right, yeah. All he can do right now is file the I-140 and then wait for the priority date to become current before he can file the 485.
Um, you, you're telling Jonathan that the, the, the law says that the, the parliament, the, the Congress passed the law that the non-immigrant visa should be adjudicated in thirty days. An immigrant visa application should be adjudicated in the, in, in, in hundred-and-eighty days, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Now, when we look into the wait period for the EB5 cases-
Yeah.
It's thirty-eight months that it's taking for the adjudication. You have anything for, I mean, but you're saying six months, it's thirty-eight months, it's like way, way far.
Yeah, there, there's two different, you know, pieces to that EB5, right? You've got your initial, your initial filing, which is taking almost three years. And then you've got your, your removal of conditions, which is also taking-
Also taking too much time.
Yeah, there, so all total, you're going to be waiting six years for them to make a decision that they should have made in six months each time at the most. So especially on the removal of conditions for EB5, anything over six months, I think you have a very good delay case. I think also if your priority date is current on your EB5 and they've taken more than six months, I think you have a very good delay case.
One thing is that when you're, when you're litigating these cases, you know, what are the probable that they're going to deny? I mean, you, you're just trying to exploit the processing, is right? I mean, you can't force them to approve it.
No.
You're not requesting the court to approve it. You're just requesting the court to adjudicate the cases.
Exactly.
Uh, would they take it and then deny it? I mean, how does that work out?
Well, they could. I mean, they, they could deny if they wanted to, if there was a basis for it. But they would have to generate a decision and they'd have to, it would have to be reasoned decision-making. The other problem with denying somebody who has filed on an unlawful delay is that unlike a, a regular litigant who has to make a decision about whether or not to sue, you're already in court. All you have to do now is amend your complaint and challenge that denial. And it's very easy to do. And I, the government's aware of that. And they realize how easy it is to amend your complaint and attack that denial. So again, as they're so cautious and afraid of litigation that they tend not to go that route. And plus, the timeline that we're, they're given with the sixty days isn't really enough time for them to perform their normal adjudication routine and come up with a denial that gets approved by a supervisor. So all of those things trend towards them approving as opposed to denying.
Um, Ma Devi from Facebook has a question about a missing H4 receipt notice and biometrics not received. Um, so in this case, the H1B and H4 extension were filed back in June, got the H1B receipt notice, but never received the H4 receipt. They were able to get the receipt number, I'm guessing probably off from the employer's cash filing fee check, which is good, but they still haven't gotten the biometrics. And I'd say, uh, filing back in June, you should have gotten the biometrics by now. So with that receipt number, this is your personal H4 application. So you can contact customer service. So it's not like a missing H1B receipt notice where only the employer or the attorney can contact. The H4 applicant themselves could contact USCIS, call the 1-800 number, tell them that, um, you did not receive your biometrics notice and they can verify your address and re-mail it. So that would be one way to do it. Or you can do an e-request online, requesting the same thing, but because you have that receipt number.
Um, the question from Face, uh, YouTube is that my, uh, CAP cap is expiring on September thirtieth. Uh, my school is starting on October twenty-third, Emily. That question is for you. Uh, the, the easiest thing would have been right now for you to do is a premium process and get the H1B adjudicated. That's much better for you to do it. Uh, school starts on October twenty-third. Do they still have the grace period of sixty days from September thirtieth after CAP cap?
Yeah, assuming the H1B is still pending, uh, starting on October first, you enter your sixty-day grace period. So during those sixty days, you can re-enroll in a new program and continue your studies at that point. That is one option. Um, I have a similar question on Facebook for someone who filed the H1B in the lottery, but it wasn't picked. STEM extension is going to be expiring in January and they want to know what their options are. Um, of course, one of the suggested options is Day One CPT University. That allows you to do a PhD or maybe a master's degree. Please do not do those programs. They are schools that are offering full-time employment opportunities and you go to school once every three months or three times a semester.
Six days a year.
This is not-
That's how I, that's how I, I used to go week in my law school.
Yeah, these are very questionable schools. You're very likely to have an issue regarding maintenance of status in the future. I definitely understand the dilemma and wanting to be able to continue working, but a student visa is not a work visa. It's intended for you to study. So that is definitely not a good choice. Um, you know, one thing to look into is, does your employer have any other offices outside the US that you could work at for a year and potentially qualify for an L1 visa in the future? Rather than going the H1B route, uh, might be something to consider um, instead of these Day One CPT-type programs.
But if you choose to go and, and study some other, uh, good university, a normal college, you know, there are only seven universities that are issuing the Day One CPTs. And we know those universities. So if you're going to the regular university and joining, uh, you should be fine. Make sure that the service system is updated on by October first to avoid all the problems that you may face if by any chance your H1B gets denied.
Uh, Nikhil from Facebook wants to know, um, he's already in his second year of H1B. His employer's been, uh, working towards the green card and filing the I-140. And he wants to know, what happens if he loses this job and decides to go back to his home country? Can he later come back on H1B? This is a great question that, uh, comes up a lot, is when is someone considered counted in the cap? When do they have to go through the lottery again? So for someone who's already used some of your H1B time, assuming it was with a cap subject employer, employer, not a nonprofit-type situation, um, you are counted and you remain counted. And you can use the remainder of your H1B time up till the six-year limit anytime in the future. So if you leave now, um, you know, after a job loss happens, you've only used two years, ten years from now, you can get your remaining four years without going through a lottery again. There's no time limit on that.
Joel has this question. Can a H4 visa spouse can apply for the H4 EAD? The perm certification process has not been applied. The answer is no. You cannot file for H4 EAD. If your spouse's, uh, I-1, labor and I-140 has not been approved. If the labor is pending, under certain limited circumstances, you can apply. But if the perm has not been filed, no way, you cannot file for H4 EAD.
Uh, Rashad wants to know, is it okay to work in the same area for a different client without filing a new amendment? Um, so this really boils down to whether the terms and conditions of the H1B remain the same. Now, assuming that the salary is the same, the job title's the same, the job duties are the same, uh, the only difference is a change in location, there is a possibility that an amendment isn't required. But if your employer does get a new LCA, that new LCA under matter of Simeo requires an amendment to be filed. But the real question is, if you're moving to a different client, even if it's within the same area, is the job really the same? The employer-employee relationship has now changed because there's a different contract going on. You've got, uh, you know, different supervisors at the end client side. So I think there's a very good chance USCIS could come back and say an amendment was necessary. Uh, we haven't seen that happen a lot, but there's a potential for it. Where we do see the issue is if you need to go for visa stamping and have not filed the amendment, it's very likely that your visa could be denied at the consulate. So be aware of that.
Ajit has this question. How many of these batch two and batch three litigation has been approved? Uh, last time I checked, about seventy, eighty percent of the batch two and about fifty to sixty percent of batch three applications have been already approved. Please note that it's not been sixty days for either batch two and batch three. We do expect all the cases to be approved in sixty days. Uh, we do have some negative reviews that are going on, on those people that did not get the approval uh, within forty days. But we are telling that it's going to take sixty days for the H4 EADS to be adjudicated. Uh, uh, so be patient, it's not going, there are some cases that will fall beyond thirty days. Uh, we haven't seen a case at this point of time, uh, that will fall beyond sixty days, uh, that once we file the litigation. Obviously, we, one more time, we treat that past results are not guaranteed for the future results. But that's been, you know, we just view the statistics.
And, and there's a, a practical reason, because a lot of people ask that question. Why are some approved in a short period of time and some are approved, you know, closer to that sixty-day mark? Uh, the practical answer is, the agency has digitized nothing. Every single adjudication is on a paper file that they have to locate. So as it comes in, it, it's stuck in the loading bay or stuck in the intake office of the service center who's handling that case. And then it gets sent to the floor for adjudication. So if those petitions are already on the floor for adjudication, they're much easier to find for the agency. And they pull those off and they hurry and get those out. They have to go back into the loading docks and loading bays and go through the thousands and thousands and thousands of petitions that are coming in each week to find those cases that are subject to the lawsuit if they haven't already been put to the floor for adjudication.
Um, Debbie has a good question on Facebook that comes up quite a bit this time of year. I don't have a great answer though. Um, so in this situation, the H1B has already been approved. I'm going to assume that this was a cap case. And, uh, so you got your change of status approved, but it's not taking effect until October. At the same time, your driver's license has expired because your OPT expired, even though you got the CAP gap because your H1B has been approved. Now, the DMV is taking its time to verify, um, your status before they will issue the driver's license renewal. So the reason you're not going to like the answer is, at least here in Texas, we've found many, many times, they will not renew the driver's license based on your CAP gap. Even though you have an I-20 for CAP gap, even though you have your H1B approved, they are not renewing the driver's license until October first, when they can get that save verification done. We've tried reaching out to congressmen on this issue. Um, it, there's not a lot of great options. Just keep pushing them, uh, try to explain, try to ask for a supervisor uh, to show that you have the valid I-20 that has extended you to September thirtieth. But then you run the risk of getting a driver's license that's going to expire on September thirtieth and having to, uh, file, you know, uh, apply for another renewal on October first. So it's a big pain and I don't have a good solution for you at this moment.
Anything else, Emily?
I think we've about run out of time, so, yeah.
Thank you very much, Jonathan, for coming from Washington DC and then being part of our organization. We are very proud and thank you. Thank you, Ble.
Thanks for joining, everyone.